One.
Not bad, my second meeting of the night.
And it's still young.
Yes, still let up.
My clock shows seven o'clock.
Sounds good.
The real call. Mister Parker, you present?
Here.
Very good, Mister Mantraska.
Present.
Very good, I'm here and our staff representative is here. Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, I uh call this meeting of the. The Rica Planning Board Rules and Regulations Subcommittee to order. It is seven oh one P M. Let's uh rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, um. So, uh. Mister Mantraska just informed me that a couple of the the documents that I sent out didn't go. And um. So I'm trying to see if if that was universal or not. Uh, the funny thing is.
I did not have any attachments on your emails.
Okay, I just I just resent that to you all. And uh I will, I will, um. So is is there a place uh for copies of the Concord Lexington? Uh, et cetera, um similar documents to be posted? Uh, on our town site or?
There can be.
Since these are working documents, okay, all right, I uh I'll 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 send those to you for. Uh, to be available for folks to take a look at. I just, um. How do they get the delineated or or name, just by name, or is there a folder? Or really mixed in with all our other documents?
I can, um. I can put them, I can. Put them pretty much anywhere, um, they can, yeah, to where do you want, like, where do you want them on the website, I can?
Yeah, I guess, I guess, um, if there isn't a a subfolder for uh. The Subcommittee, um, for rules and regs, I guess we would need to create one and just uh, could just hold this stuff there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Jane. Is it possible that under the Planning and Community Development page? Um, there's a sidebar and there's one that says zoning and you hit that and it drops down and that's where MBTA zoning record ADUs. Those are located, could we have another one inserted under zoning that said Rules and Regulation Subcommittee?
Yeah.
Thank you for the lifeline there, Mister Parker.
Yeah, I think that might be a good spot and then uh from there we'd have our own page where these documents could be hyperlinked. You know, by the staff and um. It would give a place where. The documents could be shared also.
Right, so so um, the 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 whole whole idea behind this is I I I want. There to be a level of understanding of of where we're drawing uh some of this from. Um, in case there are questions that are asked, uh, a- at the same time, I don't want it to be an an over intimidating read, um. Uh, but, uh, you know, it it's it's very interesting as I have gone and reviewed these and I and I said this in the 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 block B C C note that um. You know, I I, uh, you know, although the conquer document is for their historical commission. Uh, most all of it is portable to to what we're doing, the the Lexington document. Um, you know, uh, you know, it also is everything in it, I didn't find a single thing in it that. Um, I would not what would want to exclude, um, and yet now the format is different and how it's organized is different and so. You know, that that became a substantial challenge. Uh, for me, as I was sitting there trying to, I wasn't going to go and put together a huge matrix and say, okay, here's where they, here's where. Town X had it and and how how they did it and then and here's, you know, it just it just became overwhelming. Um, so part of that is what I'd like to spend some of this evening uh to to do, I I did send a kind of a compilation document. Um, I just sent send on that to retransmit. If um, I don't know if either of you guys have have received it yet, but it's the working document and that ultimately is. Uh, the document that, and I'm I'm sorry, um, I should say that uh we're moving to our main topic, the discussion. Of um. The uh, um. Policies and procedures portion of the Rules and Regulations Review, um, and a- as such, um. You know, I I uh. Boy, haven't seen your moment here, um. You know, we. Anyway, um, I think it's very valuable that we have it, we just need to organize it in a way that that makes sense. And um, you know, whether, and I don't want to be an overwhelming document uh at the same time, um, the the. The uh, you know, it's 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 really i- interesting, um. Uh, you know, how how things have worked, and I'll just use an example, um, you know, two of the the. As I'm sure there's more, but a couple of them that I sort of started digging into talked about associate members. Um, of of committees and I was like, well. We don't have associate members, we don't need associate members, uh, but then it dawned on me that. Uh, just before I joined the 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 planning board. Uh, there ended up being some, um. They vacating of positions on the board, so much so that they could not meet quorum for several months and so. The select board did appoint, and I believe uh, one of our prior chairman, uh, Mister Riley was uh, was. Appointed by the board and as such, they would be what we call an associate member, uh, we never used that term in my tenure tenure on the board. But, you know, that is something that um, we need to make sure it is consistent with other. Documents associated with our town, but um, you know, that it 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 demystified certain things. Uh, uh, you know, and you know, and reading it and looking at it, uh, but also highlighted something that we, you know, we, you know, it's worth. Considering being, you know, included in uh in this uh this document.
So I didn't know that uh that would be make them an associate member, I thought being appointed by the select board would still give them full member. Hmm, rights, right, now they're. They've been appointed, they're gonna see out that one term or for that year, right?
Yeah, and 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 and. You know, they 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 did, it just was a, it was a distinction of, um, you know, that this case they were appointed versus. Uh, you know, elected, uh, but my understanding was that they had all all rights and and that and so. You know, it's something worth discussing now, is that a, is that, uh, uh, you know, I I raise it as a point of. Interest that sparked, not that it is a a a top tier element to be reviewed and resolved. Uh, immediately, so why am I spending time on it? Well, just that that these are interesting things that that pop up.
Yeah.
Um, you know, in and I and I found is uh is very worthwhile. Uh, during, uh, you know, during during some of the the reviews, so anyway, but I do do apologize for the um. Uh, you know, document, uh, uh, you know. Uh, transmital problem and uh hopefully that's just a user problem and not more systemic. Uh, anyway, um. But let me, uh, um. So the this this working document, uh, and so let's, that that that's the thought that I had lost before is, um. Uh, uh, the thanks to uh, uh, Senior Pan and Morel for coordinating with Chris, I did forward. Um, that communication to you all, um, about, uh. The fact that there is a way forward for a collaborative workspace. Uh, however, um. He too had some concerns with. The um, open meeting law issues and so the recommendation uh from the staff was that we have a uh further dialogue on. Uh, you know, the importance and um value of having this collaborative workspace. And so I do wanna um. Take a few moments to just gets get get thoughts from the board members on on this.
Sure, um. I guess one thing I noticed in his comments were how planning board members don't get issued a town of Bill Ricker email. Um. So I. Kind of wondered. Why we don't get a town of Bill Ricker email. Much like the school people get a school email and and the select board have a town email, we are also elected, um. It doesn't, I don't know, it doesn't cost anything for the town to add email addresses to their accounts or, you know, I mean, I guess maybe it's work on Chris's end. Um, but it seems like maybe that's something that. Should be discussed. At the town level, you know, going forward for planning board members, maybe it's something they should have access to, um. You know, we are the really the only other elected board that probably doesn't have these email addresses. Right, everybody else that's elected has a town email address, literally.
Right.
Right, no, I I, go go ahead, Tony, sorry.
I'm gonna just make two points in that first, uh, point two with Mike, sorry for the emails, so previously when I was on FinCom, I had a town email address. And then when I was off, didn't have it anymore. Um, when I got elected to this, I asked Bartlett to give us, give me my email address back. And he said he wasn't doing it anymore, they weren't doing it to to any more electives, that's why they had us create. The emails, um, but. What I find interesting is that we are doing town of Burick work, if there's ever a lawsuit. Right, they they ask for emails, right, and so if you're combining all Bill Ricker business into. Your personal emails, all going to one box, you know, they're gonna have access to that. Right, if it ever gets subpoenaed and it it's a problem and I and I. And I've been through it. But a lawsuit with something else, but luckily I have a separate segregated email for just certain things and. It. But if somebody somebody doesn't, it it's an issue, um, and I know. So there's that, and then the um, the other point I wanted to, um. Oh, was the beginning part, oh, the collaborative work, so we had this conversation in our long range master plan Subcommittee meeting. And Kat. Uh, really discouraged us from doing that because she felt it was going to be an open meeting law violation. Um, because if more than one person's in there collaborating. It's not posted, like if it was. Me and Jane or me and Kat collaborating, that was fine. But if you and if it's me and Blake and me or me and you, Mike, then it becomes a problem with open meaning law, so. In the longer range master plan, because that came up. It was sad we wouldn't go that route because he felt there was an open meaning law violation. So it's.
Interesting.
Yeah, so to to uh to your point on the uh town email address, so I I did when uh when we were asked by the town clerk to set up a a unique. Email address as town meeting members, uh, I went back to. Uh, Chris, as I had gone to him on multiple occasions prior, saying. You know, I I I could do the ethics training, I am, I am considered a town employee. Uh, why then do I not get one and the the bottom line was? Too much work, too much transition, too much turmoil, um, you know, uh, you know, we have caucus people that come in only for a year at a time. You know, I'm, you know. There's no appetite for it, so, um, you know, I think that perhaps, um, you know, with a new select board. And this whole idea that, you know, there's potential for, you know, remote. Um, uh, you know, work here, uh, for town meeting, et cetera, I think that that maybe this warrants going to our acting town manager. And to the board, select board. Uh, for. Uh, consideration and uh and we'll go from there, and we have. Two hundred and ninety-four full-time people on uh on town staff, I would think that they would be able to get enough folks to be able to maintain a few websites, you know, I mean, uh, email addresses, but. You know, what's the adage, we oversimplify that which we don't understand, and so I'm greatly oversimplifying this.
And and I'm not even saying open it up to town meeting because that that could get cumbersome, but.
Yeah, I agree.
Seven board members, like they can't like. And so maybe each year you might have one new one, maybe in other years you might have two new ones, like.
It's not a big deal to shut it off and turn it on, it do it elsewhere.
Right.
Not a big deal.
Shouldn't be, shouldn't be a burden on licensing, should, anyway, so this, in in my mind, this is a doable do, um, but the 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 greater point, though, of. Um, you know, collaborative workspace and and did I, did I broach this as, you know, concern that it could open the door for open meeting violation, absolutely, I did. Um, that doesn't mean that I'm afraid of open meeting law violations, uh, you know, the 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 good news here is that we have, uh, you know. Uh, three members of the board, three voting members of the board that are here, so in theory, maximum of three of us would be on at a time. You know, if that really is gonna happen and uh and that doesn't, you know, broach the uh the standard and so. You know, we can put together some protocols in place to uh to do this, but. Uh, to have to go to old school, and I'm an old school guy. Um, approaches to this i- is just is not moving in the right direction. Uh, for taking advantage of the technological capabilities that we have. Um. And uh, you know, I I think that, uh. Uh, you know. The approach that was there, you know, again, getting us a a an email, um, you know, provides a little bit greater level of. Um. Protection, uh, there's a better word, but that's that's what I'm coming up with, um, the the idea that one member of the. Planning staff that has, uh, you know, the the, you know, the 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 town, um. Email account, putting together Google Doc that we all can use, uh, you know, it, you know, it it's it's not a heavy lift to to do what we want, what we want to do. Um, I think that the benefit outweighs the risk. In that we then have, uh, rather than having a an editor compiler who who is is, you know, would be prone to losing things or. Not understanding or oversimplifying, uh, that we have, uh, you know, folks that that. You know, we we have a document that has an audit trail to it. And uh, and that we we proceed, so, um. I would, I would prefer that we use a collaborative workspace and that we proceed with that, um. Uh, Mister Mantraska, you 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 know, what? Are you gonna have problems with that if we uh if we? Uh, request the planning staff to proceed with help and get this thing set up?
I would, I think also in that letter was. A recommendation asked town council, so I think. That might not be a bad idea and then maybe there may be some procedures that we could follow so that we don't. Get ourselves in trouble and then that can carry over to my Subcommittee too, then.
So, so that's, that's great, um, so in, uh. Thank you for teeing that up for me, Mister Mantraska, um, so, um, another point. That uh, that probably warrants going to the select board and um. And the uh, and the town manager on is the fact that we uh do not have independent. Unfettered uh access to town council. Um, we only have access to town council if the town manager says we can. And uh, and that is clearly articulated in the. Select Board's uh Policies and Procedures Document. Um. Our Chair, um. I believe, again, is subject to the same, uh, you know, the the same restrictions, it it would have to go through the Chair. To uh, to the town manager for the okay, so, um, anyway, I, you know, yeah, we need to do this, yes, we need to go to council, um, but. It. We are elected folks, we have an ongoing litigation right now. Um, and, you know, to to read in, uh, you know. Printed text that we don't have access to council without a mother may I from someone else. Is frankly indefensible.
They did the same thing to the town clerk.
So, uh, you know, th- this is, you know, um. You know, again, you know, if we if we're worried that folks are going to, you know, task them with petty things that that's that's easy to track and then uh. Put down the clamps if we need to, but, uh, anyway, that's I'm. I'm I'm I'm. Jousting at windmills here, I don't mean to, you you guys, you guys as uh as a thing, but, um, you know, I I just. Anyway, yes, we need to to get to uh town council and we can do that, so, um. Uh, Mister Chair, I can uh put something together, send it to you officially and then you can proceed or. You know, how would, how would, how would you like to to move forward as Chair of the Planning Board of the Subcommittee?
Uh, so I think. If the language in the select board says that I have to submit it to the town manager, then. Uh, yes, you should write up a letter stating. You know, what it is we're asking town council, which should be their opinion about a collaborative workspace. Um, open to the three planning board members, uh, in the Rules and Regulation Subcommittee. And then I will forward that to our acting town manager. Uh, copy Catherine Jane and uh the select board chair. So that they have knowledge of it.
Good, okay, that action is mine.
Would it make sense to add the select board secretary that way there's at least a record of it, in case it somehow gets lost, it's part of their records as well?
I'll stick with the smaller group, maybe I can B C C him, um.
Okay.
Just so that it's not too many people on the. You know, the head.
Gotcha.
Um, but at least the select board chair, you know, she's the one that really has the. Kind of also the control over the select board to some extent, so, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll I'll uh, I'll cop, I'll B C C the uh Secretary.
Hey. So, uh, Plan Department, you guys are uh off off the hook for uh until we hear back from council.
Okay.
Grabbing a piece of paper.
Blake, I saw him got that email. Do you know which one email you sent it to?
I sent it.
To the Gmail one, right?
I sent it to your, yeah, Abe and Truska, uh, you know. Precinct, whatever.
Yeah, the Gmail one, I I saw him got it.
I got it a while ago.
Yeah, I don't know why, I keep refreshing too.
See.
Let me, you know, so let me check someone real quick.
Just please, so.
Sometimes stupid things go on a spam and I don't understand.
Okay, so.
No, not in spam.
Come on, really? Okay, it's Abe and Truska, town dot Bill Ricker dot M A dot U S.
No, 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 no. That's the old Bill Ricker, that's the old. That's the old, that's the old Bill Ricker email address, town of Ricker email address. That's why. Go Abe and Trust.
That's the exact one you 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 sent a reply back to me to uh to send.
Abe, Abe and Truska dot Bill Ricker dot P C T nine at Gmail dot com.
Good grief.
Yeah, I don't like.
All right, let's see if this pops up, hey. Yeah, dot Bill Rick at our precinct nine at Gmail dot com, huh? Good grief.
The other one's my old Bill, that's my old Bill Ricker uh email address. When I was on FinCom.
All right, well, there we go. Okay, all right, well, now you should have it.
Hey, there it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, um. I want to take a quick look at the working document. And um, anyway, so I items I had captured from uh from my own notes, uh, to include in this area. Uh, is, you know, the the control of the meeting and again, that that section is is addressed in a number of. Um, these other other documents and, um. I will, I will be. Forwarding, uh. To the Planning Department mailbox, the uh. Parallel. Rules and regulations, the Chelmsford policies. The conquered rules and regulations, and again, I, we we said this a number of times, it's for the historical district, but most of it, uh, you know, can be. Uh, made such that it would uh, that it would apply the Lexington. Um, also pulled up Lowell, Lowell is very interesting, there are some elements in there that could be used, so I'll be sending that as well. And um, and we'll, we'll expand this group, I'm sure, as it comes on and and, um. You know, as as folks look at other other areas that that may have things, I, I did, um. Uh, try, I took another look at Burlington to see if they had uh had had uh anything. Um, along these lines and I could not find. Anything, um, I had thought. Uh, from our discussions at our into, you know, that are at our prior meeting, um, that Burlington had some. Uh, they've got a lot of detail, a lot of uh of of documents, but they, I didn't find anything that was, uh, that we could construe as a. You know, plans and policies or or uh, or procedures and I I believe, um. Uh, Mister Mantraska, you had highlighted that there's a uh, there's a timeline that one of the the towns around us uses that might be worthwhile for us to. Take a look at.
Yeah, so. So I meant, we have ours, but then Tewksbury has the, an additional column of when a butter's should be pulling, when they should be pulling the butter's list. And that's not on ours, so I thought that was kind of helpful to add, so we have. Timeframes, so we know, we know what to expect from the applicant, the applicant knows what to expect from us for all these documents. Um, and then also, you know, the staff knows. Um, that these documents should be. You know, in the office before we even put it on the agenda to have them come before us.
Excellent. Okay, so, um. Let's go ahead and, um. Uh, anyway, so so the. Items, again, I I miss things, um. Uh, so, you know, with, again, this is a working document that. Uh, for the time being, we'll have to work old school, but ideally. Um, you know, once we get, if we get coun- councils concurrents, we'll be able to uh to proceed in a more collaborative. Uh, area, but uh from my notes, again, control of meeting, uh, the agenda generation process, um. Uh. The, you know, the reorganization, uh, we we highlighted that, um, you know, with the, the, you know, what has transpired and that with the select board that we do need to highlight the fact that extraordinary reorganization. Um, you know, it can happen, uh, under the right circumstances, um, committee assignments and uh warrant article process. And powers and duties, um. There may have been other items, uh, but, uh, you know, that that I I may have. Um there may have been other items, uh but uh you know, that that I I may have missed. But then, and I'm sorry for my uh poor editing of this document, but uh it starts with number two. You know, uh two through um. Through two through nineteen are um uh other items that were in the conquered document that I thought had a level of uh applicability uh to us. Actually, it's it's three through uh three through nineteen. Um and this is where we started getting into, you know, the differences in how things are organized, uh not, and we can worry about that later, although there may be some some benefit and and is a thing we can talk about this evening. You know, if there, you know, ways to uh to uh to do this. What one of the challenges is, I don't want this to be a an eighty page document. Um it needs to be as long as it needs to be, but you know, we're not going to legislate by this document. Um you know, it's supposed to be a helpful tool. Um you know, we don't want to enumerate every every potential circumstance uh yet. Uh you know, there there are a large number of of important elements here and um you know, making sure they're addressed, but you know, the level of detail, et cetera, you know, we need to be thinking about. And uh you know, so so these are, these are elements that I, you know, that that I think we agree in agreement on. You know, we we need to, you know, include the key elements that need to be there. We need to cover appropriate level of detail. Uh but there's no way, and it's not the intent, to sit down and and cover every uh you know, potential uh situation that is that we're going to encounter counter.
So Blake, I have a question.
Sure.
Um when we look at the our Board of Selectmen's document, does it make sense to kind of follow their table of contents or what is um pertinent to our body?
So uh great uh great, great point. Um you know, so so in in many um organizational implementation uh models, uh you 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 work from the, you know, higher authority and and work your way down. And so um parroting or mirroring the uh you know, you know, the content, uh you know, at least the structure, um you know, has has merit um in it. And so uh you know, similarly with, you know, governmental regulations, you know, you you start at the higher entity, you then may have supplements uh that a lower level entity will add and a supplement to a supplement, you know, et cetera, as you work your way down. So um so yeah, that's uh that is a a uh a uh a a very, you know, interesting perspective on a starting point and has some merit. Um you know, uh any thoughts from the staff, thoughts from uh from Mister Parker?
Yeah, I I would concur with Tony that it probably should look similar to their document. So that as we we as a town create documents, they all look in a consistent manner.
Yeah, I like consistency. I like things to look have a similar um aesthetic that way. So yeah, I think it makes sense um to go that route.
All right. I uh I don't have any issues with that. That's uh I'm in I'm in agreement um with uh with that.
Right, and theirs is really long. Ours is probably gonna be, I would say, a quarter of what they got.
Uh right, so so I did um.
But that first page is definitely a lot of that is very applicable, powers and duties. Number two, instead of calling it Select Board Meetings, that would be Planning Board Meetings. Um you know, and we could kind of work through that. Uh next one is appointments to town boards, commissions and committees. I mean, that we we want that on there. Um I mean, four is, you know, Select Board's role and Town Manager Appointment. Um we don't necessarily need that because if we have a role, it would be up in number three, which would be under Appointments to Town Boards, Committees and Commissions.
Yeah, there was something in four point two that uh that seemed um.
Reports to boards, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. That 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 gets back to, you know, a couple of our other enumerated um uh responsibilities and uh that we 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 it might be um subject to opportunity for improvement.
Mm hmm.
So that 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 was why I included that one. But yeah, so you know, fourteen, twenty um uh subsection one anyway of that, uh twenty-three, you know, so that a a couple of those are are more deeper thought elements as we get a little bit later on. Um but yes, I uh I I a- agree, um you know, whether we need to use their same numbering. Um you know, we'll we'll. Numbering style.
Just whatever fits ours, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so um. But anyway, so uh yeah, very, very good. And uh we can delve into those uh, you know, uh you know, a little bit later. But um yeah, two, you know, area two is is uh as you highlighted, Mister Parker, is uh a number of elements and all those sub-elements, uh I believe, would have uh have relevant applicability to us. So um very good. Okay, other uh. Other comments or thoughts? What um what uh have 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 you all had a chance to take a look at the the conquer document or the Lexington document?
Not with the notes that you put in your email yesterday, Blake. I wanted to go back and um take what you had, you know, like in here, it says conquered rules. Um oh no, sorry, that was the Select Board Policies. You had some subsections that were uh specifically noted in here, and I wanted to go back and and read each section. So that I, you know, could kind of write next to it like twenty-three, you know, what you know what these all were. You know, I didn't know them offhand per se. But the other ones, yeah, I um I've read a few of them. Um I think we can use a lot of what they had, as as you've said. I just I want to make sure our document is um isn't too lengthy, maybe some, you know, somewhere between ten and fifteen pages tops. Um you know, for the total document. Uh I I I just want to make sure that we're, we don't have too much, because like you said, we're not uh it's really not like a approval document for much. It's just kind of a, you know, this is what we should be doing as Planning Board Members and a guideline for um how meetings flow and things we have to do as as members. So um I want it to be, or my thought would be that it's concise, you know, not too wordy and not too cumbersome for newer members to come in and and read the document and, you know, be able to digested versus like, holy shit, I got thirty, forty pages here. I'm never gonna be able to remember all of this stuff. Um so I I would just want to kind of balance those um, you know, those two items.
Right, and and I I I I agree. Um I it may warrant or or drive, um you know, creation of a couple additional documents to get referenced. And what I mean by that is uh, you know, how does a typical uh project, you know, it gets into that timeline element that uh Miss Ventreska highlighted. Um you know, I think that may be a perfect, you know, separate document that we uh that we refer to uh that gets created in uh, you know, in 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 this um exercise that we're going through. Um uh you know, the, you know, that that timeline helps. You know, how does a, how how does an, you know, you know, what are the expectations for a a typical meeting? I think that's good. Uh one of the documents that I reviewed, um it didn't say it in those terms, but basically it was a expectations of uh Planning Board Members. And uh you know, and what is expected of us, you know, and and part of it is, should go without saying. But I think in this case, we may need to say it is, you know, one of the reasons that I've been asking for materials to be presented in an early time is to allow folks adequate opportunity to be uh familiar enough and to have good questions and comments on it. Are are there times when things are straightforward and a slam dunk? Absolutely. Um you know, and we don't want to have folk and sit sit down and say, everyone has to have a five-minute monologue. Um you know, that that's not necessary. Uh you know, if Earl has already uh, you know, said the same point that I wanted to make, fine, then we'd be able to say, you know, and it's, and we've been doing it as a board. You know, already stated, here's a subtlety or already addressed, you know, let's let's proceed. But um you know, I think that uh you you highlighted it, Mister Parker. I I think some of this would be very helpful for new members to the board. Uh you know, it does seem that uh contrary to what uh may have been the case for for a while, that we had some very longstanding, well, you know, long entrenched uh members to the committee. We do seem to have a a little bit of uh more of a rotation happening, and that's not a bad thing. But uh you know, having folks take nine months to get up to speed and to feel comfortable and confident in a meeting, you know, may not be uh uh the best thing for applicants coming in. Um but I think in a an expectation for applicants, you know, may also be a worthwhile tool. I think of the um, you know, four hundred something Boston Road Project, where, you know, the folks want to come in and put a little little uh cafe in uh in, you know, in their downstairs area. Um you know, really come in blind, not knowing what to what to expect. And uh you know, the spirit here, you know, is uh, you know, i- is uh, you know, shouldn't be adversarial, um but nor, you know, what what we want is what's best for, you know, the uh the the town. Uh but we do want people to be successful and um not that we haven't carried that attitude. I I you know, I think that we have been that, but uh you know, anyway, things to help folks uh do that without having us compromise on anything that we uh that we, you know, shouldn't. Right, I'm rambling. Okay, um well, because I uh, you know, didn't give you guys enough time to digest this. I think that um um we don't need to uh to belabor the point. Um I'm going to uh continue um with this. Uh I'll go ahead and do an update to this document over the next two weeks uh to, you know, where I think we want to slot elements from the uh uh you know, from this list into the Select Board. And obviously, uh you know, how they've kind of grouped things. And um you know, get something out, uh ideally, uh a week before our meeting so that there's time to uh to look at it, provide additional comments, et cetera, go from there. So uh other other thoughts, anything that we've we're missing or, you know, another town that want to look at, yes.
Um and I don't know if this would be to you, Blake, or maybe even to Jane. Um with respect to online meetings, um Zoom meetings, that sort of thing. Is that, is, did that get voted on by the legislature itself permanent, or is it still a temporary thing? And the reason why I'm asking is because then if it is permanent, then we're gonna have to have um some type of procedure or in here so people understand, hey, if I'm sitting at home, hey, we have that roll call vote, we have the roll call, you know.
Yep.
Calling, that sort of thing.
I agree with you, Tony, that we need to have a section that uh is remote participation. Uh some, you know, whatever we want to call them, remote participation.
That way, everyone understands that what their role is if they're sitting at home versus at the meeting and what the chairman has to do, because now he has to call a roll.
Yep.
It has to be, everything has to be a roll call vote, my is my understanding, but.
I mean, I I even have a thought on that, that like, if the chairman is remote and the rest of the board is together, that, I mean, as the chair, I would, I would actually pass the baton and ask Blake, Vice Chair, will you run the meeting tonight while I'm on remote? It will just go smoother with people inside there and and I'll just ask my questions as if I was a member. Um because, you know, when you, I'm sitting here all by myself and looking at a screen, uh I I'm not there to be able to really see like, if Ed wants to talk, you know, he'll he'll kind of give you you know, the, you know, just like the head nod or something, you know, I'm not there to be able to um catch that head nod or the the the, you know, the the hand goes up a little bit from the desk. Um you know, so I think in a way, if if the whole board's there and I have to be remote and I'm the chair, I I would.
It's tough to run a meeting.
I would just say, listen, tonight, for tonight, I I'm gonna ask for the Vice Chair to run the meeting. Uh he's there, he's in person, um and he and he'll be able to direct everybody much quicker than the delay that will happen with me here on remote, trying to see different views. You know, because it's not like everybody's got a camera on them, right? It's one camera and it's a speaker, like depending on how you have your settings, right? You know, right now I see you, Tony, but I'm talking. And I'm highlighted on the top, but it's like, you know, you have these.
Well, there's only four of us, right? But if you have seven and you and you maybe, if you're on, and if you're away on vacation, maybe you're on your phone, maybe you're on your laptop and
Right.
You know, the screen's smaller and you may, you definitely not gonna see stuff where if you're sitting at home on a computer with a fifteen-inch or twenty-inch screen.
Right, so that was one of the thoughts that I was thinking about remote participation was that, you know, and maybe it's an unwritten rule. I again, I I kind of have those common sense things that, like Blake said, we shouldn't really have to put these in writing, but you know, kind of.
And I think that has to be.
You know, so I I.
Especially with someone that's new.
I I wouldn't want to run the meeting if everybody else is sitting behind the desk with the applicants there, with the the staff there. Um that would be my preference.
It's one thing if this was during COVID and everyone's remote.
Yes.
But if you got six people in the room and you are somewhere else, it's. Yep, I agree.
Yeah, so um uh excellent, excellent point. I um, you know, remote um participation is addressed in at least one of the uh the the the.
Selectable and stuff.
Yeah, I don't think it's, it I think it's in one of the other town ones that was that was there. So um now, in many instances, the language that they've used is not necessarily the language that uh that is is best or that we want to. But the idea, you know, so right now I'm dealing, just dealing with, you know, what are the concepts that we're dealing with? Now we can talk about what, you know, what kind of language, um you know, do we want to to highlight? You know.
I think one of them wasn't up to date with their language, because I think the rules changed a little bit with remote. And so we may have to make sure that that's up to date.
Right, and I I think we would need a a um um disclaimer on that, that uh you know, it, you know, at at such time as uh to, you know, remote is is no longer allowed, you know, then it would automatically become, you know, not applicable. But you know, uh we'll we'll.
That's section thirty-two.
Yeah, those uh those those types of things. So, okay, very good. Uh other, other um, any, any other elements that we want to include in this? Or, you know, are there anyone look at another Towns document? So I'll I'll uh see if I can pull up the the Tewksbury or if you've got it handy. Uh Mister Ventreska, you can go ahead and send it to uh to us and uh and the planning staff when we get that.
So I just had a quick question, and this would be for Jane.
Mm hmm.
Um since we're going to model our documents similar to the Select Boards, would you be able to obtain the Word version of the Select Boards uh Policies and Procedures so that Blake could then, you know, easily move those over to another Word document? Um because sometimes working with PDFs, you know, it's it's not as, you know, uh copy paste friendly. Um so I was wondering if we could get a uh a Word version of that document to start with, and then we can kind of modify that, that table of contents right there and um.
Yes, I can ask. I'll ask Don tomorrow.
Yeah, Don, Don's, you should be pretty good about that. Yeah, Don, Don's usually, should be pretty good about that.
Yeah, she she actually uh provided me a co- a Word copy, editable copy of the old version. Uh it has been updated subsequently, and so I I I will. Uh need to take a look, at least at the uh, uh the the back of the document has uh has the the the, what was, you know, the revision history. And to see if any of the applicable sections were were done, but um.
One before.
Yeah, so uh, yeah. So, thank you, yeah, because uh, you know, it was for the, you know, the two years ago, uh run at this. All right, um. Okay, anything more on the uh this first discussion item here, the subcommittee interaction with staff and planning board members, which were. You know, commitely calling the the policies and procedures piece.
Right. No, I'm I'm good, Blake, thank you.
Um, yeah, and and I've, and I'll continue to to say it, uh, in our our. This is just the first step, we do have other elements. At some time, uh, Jane, uh, we will need the um. The legal comments that came back on Denise's work on our uh subdivision. Rules and and regs piece, uh, I would like to, you know, that will be under the purview of this committee, I believe. Um, as one of the the other documents that we'd be taking a look at, so. If it, if at some time, we don't need it immediately, of course, it's it's not, you know, but but coming up. Um, we will need to take a look at that to see what uh what what the concerns were that council had. And um and how much of that document we will will be usable. Uh, or whether we're gonna have to, you know, go with another avenue to try and get that updated.
Um, just, so, the document itself. With the exception of the B two. Um, part is like that should all be fine, it's the, and I I don't remember the specific comments, so I'll. I think we have the letter still, we should still have the letter, but the they had concerns, the biggest concerns were about the B two. Uh process and what exactly it is, and that. Uh it's kind of, we're running into that with the litigation where that wasn't ever really documented when it was put into place. Um, and so, um, that's. Kind of, that's kind of the question, that's that was KP Law's question. With. Uh Denise's uh copy or um her edits, so that's kind of where we're stuck, is what do we do with the B two? Or what is it, how do we? What do we need to do with it? I mean, that's a timely question to a- ask and answer, I think.
Very good, so, we'll we'll leave that action with you. Very good, Mr. Matreska, any uh any other? Items we need to uh uh talk about this evening? Okay, um, anyway, I I've not received any questions or comments or concerns from anyone on our our work. So I don't know if anyone else has had any feedback from anyone, or folks even know what we're doing. But I thought that um, gonna keep this on as a regular item, so that if there are some uh. Concerns, questions, et cetera, that come up, we can, we can make sure those are covered.
I uh will be asking for you to give us a update on Tuesday. Um, so, you know, uh be ready for uh just giving a brief update on. Uh what we've done to the rest of the planning board on Tuesday night. When we go to. Reports from committees.
Very good, yes, I'll I'll be ready for that, so. Uh for that meeting, but uh but I will, I will, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Matreska.
I'll have to give Mike, I'll have to give you one too for the long range master plan, because we did meet.
Okay, perfect. Great.
All right, uh, I don't believe any old business. Okay, let's uh turn then to the minutes of June twenty-sixth.
I only have one comment on the minutes, and. It's a minor thing, it's not, I know it's not a big deal, but. Words under members, we have Blake Robinson, should we list him as the committee chairman, so that way people know who the chairman is?
Yeah.
Looked at the wrong minutes, Doc. Yeah, because he was al- he was already voted for chair the last meeting, so yeah, this minute should re- represent him as the chair.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise, I didn't really see any any uh any, you know, everything seemed fine to me, level of details was was appropriate.
Motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Matreska, you in favor?
I.
Yeah, Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And I am an I unanimous. Very good, listen, what else has anything else, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. Parker, I assume you're in favor?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Matreska?
I.
All right, and I am in favor, we'll see you guys in two weeks.
All right, Jane, don't hit the end button just yet, you can stop the recording, but I got a question for you.